The Novi Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting for Thursday, August 22, 2024. At this point, I'd like to ask us all to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the secretary if you'll call a roll.
Yes. Trustee Bartlett?
Here.
Trustee Burke is absent, excused. Trustee Crawford?
Here.
Trustee Dooley's here. Trustee Helvengus?
Here.
Trustee Gualapu?
Here.
Trustee Stirring?
Here.
Student Representative DeMore?
Here.
Student Representative Dohadwala?
Here.
Great.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of our agenda. I'm going to mention initially that we're going to delete item two from the presentations. Novi Friends will not be here tonight, but will be here next month.
They will be, yes.
So delete item number two from a presentation. Anything else on the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Would that change?
Move to approve as amended.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of two items. The minutes of July 25, 2024, which was a regular board meeting. And it also includes the approval of the claims and the warrants for accounts 271 and 271, which were listed in pages 10 and 12 in our booklet. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda approval.
Move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? If not, secretary, I ask you to call the vote.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengus?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Moving on to next item in our agenda, which is the presentations. This is where we're honored by our team presentation by our student representatives. The floor is yours. And the mics and all the sound systems and everything else to go along with it, and whatever else you want.
I want to just apologize. I did not load for you to have the presentation on the screen, but you do have it in print and you can follow along. We'll make sure that this presentation and the information provided by our two student reps this evening will go in the packet for next month, just so that it's on record. Okay?
So this is our 2023-2024 end of year presentation as a wrap-up of what we all did this year. So again, I'm Alex DeMore.
And I'm Alina Dohadwala.
And we also had some help from our Youth and Teen Services Supervisor, Lindsay Gotchey.
So first, we'll be discussing tween and teen programs.
For the fall of 2023, in September, we had the Candy Corn Catapult and the Robotics Demonstration Day, as pictured to the right. In October, we had the Grab and Go Halloween Kit. November was the Egg Carton Wreath, also pictured to the right. And our monthly programs consisted of the Novi Chess Club and Tailwagon Reading Buddies.
The winter 2023-2024 tween and teen programs included, in December, the Wacky Winter Science Fun with Mad Science of Detroit and Gingerbread House Decorating, which you can see on the right. In January, we hosted the Tween Slime Party. In February, we hosted the SAT Practice Test on February 10th and February 24th. And we also hosted the Candy Sushi Event and Speaking and Communication Skills for Teens Workshop. And the monthly programs that we hosted were the Novi Chess Club, Tailwagon Reading Buddies, and Camp Half-Loud.
As for spring of 2024, our tween and teen library programs consisted of the SAT Practice Test in March, Chinese Culture Handcrafts, the Tolkien Day Party, as pictured to the right, and the DIY Stretch Bracelets. For April, we had the Emoji Portrait Program, Chinese Culture Handcrafts, another SAT Practice Test. And then again, our monthly programs consisted of the Novi Chess Club, Tailwagon Reading Buddies, and Camp Half-Loud.
In summer 2024, the tween and teen programs included, in June, Magnificent Maple Syrup Presentation. And the monthly programs, again, included Camp Half-Loud, Novi Chess Club, and Tailwagon Reading Buddies.
As for our TAB wrap-up, meetings were held monthly from September of 2023 until May of 2024, concurrent with the school year. Our TAB attendance averaged around 14 attendees, with their most popular months including October and December. In October, TAB members made cards for the LEGO Community Service Project hosted by the library. And in December, TAB hosted a gingerbread house making event. Members participated in many activities this year, including cookie decorating, Q-tip making, Q-tip painting, and card making. The community service project this year was hosting a slipper donation drive in the library lobby. The TAB elections for the upcoming year were held in May, and meetings will resume again in September of 2024. Pictured here are just some photos from a few of our fun meetings. So again, we did a lot of card making, cookie decorating, and then we had our fun meeting with the gingerbread house decoration.
In terms of teen space, teen space saw a huge woman popularity this year, with some ones seeing over 1,000 attendees. Students used the space to hang out, play games, and study. And two hosted teams presented there, which also increased attendance. Teen Space will resume in August of 2024, concurrent with the current school year. The monthly stats for Teen Space are as follows. In September, we saw 960 attendees. In October, we saw 1,491 attendees. November, we saw 1,169 attendees. December, we saw 901 attendees. January, we saw 714 attendees. Note that December and January included winter breaks, that may be why there was lower attendance. February saw 1,002 attendees. March saw 676. Again, spring break was during March, I believe, so that might be an explanation for lower attendance. April saw 813 attendees. May saw 822 attendees. And June saw 203. Again, June only had one week with the school year, so that's why there was lower attendance. The total teen space visits were totaled to 8,751 for the entire 2023 to 2024 school year.
If I can point something out to you, that's back to pre-COVID numbers that our teen population is visiting the library. So kudos, you know, to you ladies, because I know that you're also sharing that information about what teen space is. But our students are finding back the library and finding that connection with us again, which we're very excited about.
Next, we'll be presenting the teen stop displays from this year.
So in September, it was Hispanic Heritage Month, so the display reflected that. October, our theme was spooky books. And finally, November, the theme was in honor of The Hunger Games movie.
The winter teen stops, teen stops displays included December, the best books of 2023 to celebrate all the entire year of reading. January included Taste of Treats. And February was Paranormal Romance for Valentine's Day.
In terms of our spring season, March included Books About Books for March's Reading Month. April was Novels and Verse in Honor of Poetry Month. And May was Asian American and Pacific Islander Month.
The summer teen stop displays were in June for Pride Month. And July included Summer Camp.
Thank you all for listening, and we invite any questions.
Very, very impressive in terms of this presentation and all the activities that you did throughout the year. I'm not keeping track of the exact numbers, but just looking through the list, it seems more and more all the time. So it, and based on what you said in terms of the attendance now, it's back to pre-COVID or about pre-COVID. It's great, very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you put in and for volunteering and being here with us. And I do have a question. I'm wondering, you know, after this past year, is there anything that you want to see that you'd like to, like, enhance for the upcoming year? Do you have, like, a wish list or anything that you thought about that you want to share?
Honestly, like, the library at this point is incredible. And so I feel like just with how many programs we are doing, just like keeping up the attendance and stuff like that, and keeping people coming back, like, pre-COVID. So I'm actually really glad where we are at right now, so.
I think we could even take on the project of promoting more the tween and teen programs more in the community, because the attendance has been great, but I bet we could get it up even more. And for TAB meetings, we'll work on promoting that in the high school, because I think a lot of the high school students would definitely be interested. But I think there's just not a lot of awareness of the program, so we'll definitely work on that this year.
Yes, and I would agree with that with a TAB, too, because as I'm an officer in that group, and so that is something that I've talked about a lot, is like getting our promotion up. Because I definitely do think that our numbers could be a lot higher, because it's a group that I think a lot of people would enjoy. It's just not, like, as known as it could be. So we want to work on promoting it as much as possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If I could add to that, I know that we're also looking into some social media that perhaps we could do better with our teen audience as well.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Public comment. In order to hear all citizens' comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect a three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session. However, it is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first, last name, and address. Is there anybody from the public which would like to address the Library Board? I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so I don't think there's going to be any public comment tonight. With that, we're moving on to the Student Representatives Report. You have a regular representative report included, plus the annual one you just gave us. Yeah, take it over.
So for our July of 2024 Library Board Student Representative Report, first up is the tween and teen library programs. The Black and Brown Theater Presents Rapunzel Program was held on July 10. Black and Brown Theater presented a timeless story with a timely twist as both heroes go on an adventure to discover who they truly are. Patrons enjoyed a live performance of this classic story of Rapunzel. The program included a 10-minute pre-show, 30-minute live performance, and a 10-minute Q&amp;A section, followed by a meet and greet with performers. Our attendance for this event was 125. The Novi Chess Club program was held on July 11th and July 18th. This event provides an opportunity for teens and tweens to participate in games, learn about chess, and sharpen their skills. Our attendance was 47 and 36, respectively. The Comedy Magic Family Show with Cameron Zvara program was held on July 17th. Families enjoyed mind-blowing magic, squeaky-clean comedy, and tons of audience participation. Our attendance for this event was 150. The Wizards' Wands and Potions with Slow Museum of Discovery and Longway Planetarium program took place on July 24th. Patrons stepped into another world full of wizards and witches. Patrons also created their own light-up wands and squished their fingers into ghost brains. Our attendance for this event was 27. The Tamil Summer Read-A-Thon was held on July 27th. It was the first session of a five-week-long workshop designed to help children read Tamil fluently and quickly with interactive lessons and fun-filled activities provided by experienced teachers. Patrons will not only be trained to read not only fluency, but also an understanding of the material as well. Program hosted by Nune Mon Tamil Academy. Our attendance for this event was 15. And next up is our Teen Space update. Teen Space will resume on August 26, 2024, which is also the first day of school for the high school, well, for the district. Teen Space is held on Monday through Friday from 2:45 to 5:00 p.m., except during vacation breaks and half-days, during the school year, and the whole meeting room of the library. Teen Space is open to students in grades 7th through 12th, and a school ID is required for admittance.
The Teen Advisory Board update is as follows. TAB meetings will resume in September 20, in September 2024. Get involved with the library by joining our Teen Advisory Board. All high school students are welcome. You do not need to be a Novi resident to participate. Participants will share ideas for teen programs, discuss teen books, and organize a community service project and more. Meeting attendance will count as volunteer hours if you are registered in the library's teen volunteer program. You do not need to be a registered volunteer to attend TAB. If you're passionate about teen services, the library would love to have you join TAB. The upcoming programs are Teen Space, grades 7 through 12, daily program held Monday through Friday, which is what Alex just discussed. September is library card sign-up month, starting Tuesday, September 3rd through Monday, September 30th. Stop by the library to participate in an activity challenge, earn a prize for completing your activity challenge, and get entered for a chance to win one of $15 gift cards to Barnes &amp; Nobles. One entry per person. Winners will be announced the first week of October. Club Half-Loud, grades 4 through 8, will be September 5th, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. No Required Reading Book Club, grades 9 to 12, will be September 12th, 4 to 5:00 p.m. Teen Advisory Board Meeting for grades 9 to 12, will be held September 20th, 3:30 to 4:30 p.m. And personalized keychains, grades 4 through 8, will be on September 24th, 7 to 8:00 p.m. The July teen sub-display theme was Summer Camp.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. What is the No Required Reading Book Club?
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, okay.
I do think that's one of the newer events, so.
Okay. And is it people just choose their own books or something like that? Oh, okay. I kind of assumed that.
Basically, it's something that's not required through school.
Gotcha.
So trying to get you to read something else that you don't have to read that's required.
Gotcha.
Yes. And I believe Austin is hosting that if I'm not mistaken, just from hearing.
I do think I would like to look into attending that.
You know, when you have lots of required reads, it's something you won't have to read.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Trustee, anyone?
So I wish you both a wonderful start to your school year on Monday. I know you're going to be a little busy, but we look forward to seeing you for the September. So if you need anything, let us know, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
I'd like to add just one thing. If you get a chance and you haven't been in the building in the last couple of weeks, sorry, please consider stopping by the new teen area. We did a small renovation, as you know. Most of it is done. I'd say about 85%. The room itself is open. It's geared towards the teens being able to sit, socialize, and study. It's a little different from the teen space downstairs, because that's more active. We have a ping-pong table, video games, and things like that. So it is more study space and small groups that we're designing the space for, but we know that we needed more seating, and so we worked to add that. I still have some furniture that has not been delivered yet, and we are waiting on the door that goes with the space. But if you get a chance, it looks wonderful. It looks like it was always meant to be, that the collection should have been outside the space. It allows for more access. A lot of adults like to read young adult materials. This way, it's easier for everyone in terms of accessibility. We've moved over four of our hexagon tables, creating more quiet space to the south end of the building and moving more space over there. Just trying to, you know, accommodate and put as much seating as we can into the building without, you know, exceeding our capacities, but trying to accommodate as many as we can after school. School will start on Monday. As you know, we will start Teen Space on that first day. We have a capacity for Teen Space of 72, and then we have a capacity right now in the teen area of 22, but that'll grow. We're still waiting for six, I'm sorry, we're still waiting for nine more seats to be accommodated in the space, which doubled, it doubled the space almost in there. We've moved a little bit of furniture out of the quiet study, just because it wasn't getting fully used. And we've put it out in the main areas, but still, there's plenty of seating in the quiet study if someone is looking for that very quiet space to be in. So just trying to maximize as much as possible. This year, we are going to have Teen Space run by four staff instead of one person. We're trying it for a year for a couple reasons. We want to make our employees more visible to the teens. If they see them in Teen Space, but then they see them on the desk, might help with building relationships. It doesn't leave that monitor, that monitor who's normally in the building and in that space by themselves siloed. So this way, it's a committee now of Lindsay, Austin, Anna, and Taylor that will take on being a part of that committee, but then also rotating one day a week and being in the space and getting to know our students. So trying, you know, something new. This was actually, when we first opened Teen Space many years ago, it was our teen librarian that was connecting and then bringing programming. Well, it's hard, one person, so we thought we would try, just if we could, using a number of staff in order to get to know more of our teens. So we will be at the front door on Monday. I will be there at 2:45 as they hit the door. We tend to see about 10%, which is over 200 students when you have over 2,000 at the high school. So we're gearing up for lots of students that, you know, it's freshmen that have probably not been in the building in this capacity. So we have three weeks designated to managers being on the floor and in the lobby, greeting our students, letting them know where they can go, you know, Teen Space. They can go upstairs. They can go to Teen Area. They can go out on the patio. We are really trying to accommodate and bring spaces to them as much as possible. We did hit some times where our capacity was full after school, and that could happen again. And we'll work to, you know, let students know to, you know, go, maybe come back and try it at a little different time, because we'll have to watch for the seating and the capacities. We only have so much, and we really can't put much more in per ADA and fire codes. So unless we're all willing to build a bigger building. Just thought I'd put that out there. Maybe we need that third floor after all. But we're very excited. I have the managers, all of our managers are, you know, taking a turn throughout the week to get to know the kids and to be faces and, you know, to also gain that confidence and opportunity to connect with the students as well. We'll be policing out in the traffic, because we know that we have parents. If I could put a plug out there, parents, please don't stop right at the main doors and sit. We need you to move and park into those 10-minute parking spots that we created a couple of years ago already. In addition to that, I have added staff parking specifically to the south row facing the school, because we were having some trouble with our staff being able to park in the school staff lot. But I hear that the high school, I'm very glad to hear this, the high school's going to do some different monitoring of the space as well and trying to keep the students to where they should be parking this year. So we're all working together, trying to make those new spaces and accommodate lots of people. And we're very excited for Monday. If you'd like to see it crazy, come and join me at 2:45 on Monday and stand with me. You will be amazed at what happens. It's a wonderful waterfall of teenagers. So I'm going to wear my jeans and I'm going to be ready, and my logoed shirt. But you're all welcome to see some of this. It's exciting. It is. I get excited for it. It does mean the building that gets very busy, and it has a different vibe. It's a little louder at that time of day. I'm sure you saw the e-newsletter that went out just this past week, just sharing information about the parking lot, sharing information about the lobby and how this is a busier time of day, you know, and maybe choosing other times of the day. If they're worried, if someone's visiting and they're worried about traffic, and they're worried about the traffic also by foot. So hopefully, we've communicated that a little bit to all of our users, and that went out to all of our cardholders in advance.
Are we gonna maybe reiterate that on social, too, do you think?
We can do that. I can work with, I'm not sure what she has, yeah. I'm not, Dana is currently out of the country, so she has put in a number of social media posts to go, and I can watch and see if there's something that we can add. We've done really good with meeting with the committee to have very good signage, both in our Teen Space area and in our teen area, talking about capacities and talking about what we expect from behavior and usage of the room. We've had conversations with our librarians, and we are filling our customer service assistant position currently, but that person won't be starting until September. But once that person comes on board, that will be someone who will walk around freely around the building and assist with patrons and moving them along, you know. And it's not just teens. I'd like to point that out, that it's not always for teens, but that tends to be the busiest time of the day. So we have that person helping us usually after school.
Awesome.
Any other questions? No? All right. Well, again, I'm putting out that invitation for you to join me on Monday. You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. First of all, I'd like to call your attention to this handout, which was included in our packet. It comes from the Fox Run Echo Initiative Group, which is Joslyn Leshure and Doreen Papard, who always work very closely with the library. I don't ever remember seeing this before. Have we had it before? Is this something brand new?
No, this is something that they do ask for me to share with you from time to time.
But anyway, I mean, it's a very nice, colorful pamphlet that describes all the wonderful Echo things that are going on around the area of Fox Run. And I mean, it's very impressive, so I want to make sure everybody had a chance to get it and take a little time to browse through it.
And I will echo you. They are wonderful partners. I'm sure that Kat will give a little bit of an update on an event that we recently had. So, thank you.
Good. My second comment was, I attended the Summer Song Fest last Thursday at Paradise Park. Dueling pianos. I think there was about 250 people there, is my guess, or somebody told me that. Another well-attended event, and my observation is we're attracting a, in addition to the crowd that we normally get, there's a slightly younger crowd that is apparently picking up on this from social media or whatever. But I'm noticing that there's a little bit of a younger crowd attending as well.
We're excited.
That's my observation. And I just want to put in a plug for, you know, Paradise Park and the Friends. Their next one is September 12th, and that's Motor City Seoul. And then they added one, so if you have the old brochures, look at the new brochures, because they're having one on September 19 as well. That's been added to the list since Elvis and Friends.
And I did update your flyer in your calendar.
It is on our page, it is page 41. It's there. But some of us keep our old stuff and we forget to look at the new stuff. I won't mention names. And then my other comment was, I have been noticing it, and I'm impressed with it, that various board members are looking at the warrants and sending questions to Julie. What was this for? Why did it cost this? And I'm impressed to see that for two reasons. One, the board members are trying to understand this. They're looking at their duty to make sure our expenditures are proper, but it's an education process as well as an understanding of what is spent for certain things. So I'm sure that takes a little bit of your time, Julie, but I'm glad to see it, because it's, to me, it's indicative of our involved board.
It is, and I appreciate that. Please, you are not bothering me. I try to get back also as quickly as I can. And I do like, I feel challenged when you are asking those questions, and I'm happy to answer them and respond to you and give you that information back. Don't hesitate to reach out.
So anyway, that's all that I have. If anybody has any questions for me, but that's all that I have. All right. And at the same time, other people on the board maybe want to talk about events they've attended or are going to attend that are directly or indirectly related to the library. Kat?
Yes, so as Julie mentioned, I had the pleasure of attending the Fox Run Resident Care Fund Gala. This is actually the second time I've gone, and I was there with Dana, our communications manager. And also, Trustee Crawford was there as well, in a somewhat different capacity, but she still represents us, too. But it was really, it was really nice to, yeah, different hat. But it was really nice to be there, because, you know, we really do have such an amazing partnership with Fox Run. And this event is such an important event for that community, but also for the greater one to understand that they're supporting residents that might have hard times, the residents of Fox Run. If they've fallen on hard times, that's what this care fund is for. And I actually didn't realize that until this year, like, fully what it was for. The theme was Willy Wonka, and every time they have a theme, they knock it out of the park every time. And I think this one was one of my favorite ones that I've seen. They did a fantastic job, and it's classy, and it's fun, and it's wonderful to see everybody dressed up. We were able to catch up with members of City Council and Mayor Fisher. And so that was also really wonderful as well, just to have that camaraderie and, you know, get to know each other more outside of other events and things like that in a more official capacity. So that was a lot of fun. And, yeah, I was just really happy to be there and enjoy time with everybody. So thank you for allowing me to represent.
Thank you. Kat? Kathy?
I have several things. One of the things I wanted to say was that at the gala, they had a photo wall, and it was all candies on the wall. And so I was with a resident who had very poor vision, and she was trying to take the candies off the wall. And I explained to her, no, it's just a flat wall. You're not going to get any candy off of it. So I, too, attended the last two concerts, along with a lot of other people. We were the older group, you know, with the younger people, but it was great. And I always loved the dueling pianos, for sure. I mean, the audience loves the music. It's just a wonderful time, for sure. I was also able to do a program at Fox Run on Tuesday, History of Novi, and for their history club. Their history club invited me, and I- Their history club invited me and I, I complimented them on their optimism because they asked me two years ago to speak on August 20th. And I thought it was last year I was gonna be speaking. And I said, okay, I'm available, but no, they're planning two and a half years in advance. And I said, wow, I, now that I'm in my eighties, I don't plan two years in advance, but oh well. I'm proud of them that they do. And another person while I was there asked me if I would come and do another program too. So, I love that connection with the historical aspects of Novi because so many of them, um, have never, this is their first living in Novi, they came from somewhere else. So, anyway, they're very much interested, a great audience. The history club, uh, chairman told me that if they could get 80 people in the audience, that would be amazing for them to have that many people in the theater. And there were over 100 that were there. So, it was very well-attended and we got tons of compliments about the program and, and it was great. And our former city manager was in the audience. And it made me nervous because maybe, you know, maybe my history wasn't quite as accurate according to him, I don't know. But he thought, he thought it was great. And they will be showing it four more times. Um, so that people, the residents there will be able to see it. You know, they can stream it on their televisions, that kind of thing. Um, wanted to also say that next week is the Michigan State Fair and Thursday is Senior Day at the fair. And we've done this every year now for a number of years. And there's going to be over 950 seniors. That's the absolute capacity of that room. Um, 950. So, um, it's gonna be a great day. So, they have breakfast and they have a program and, uh, it's really wonderful to see all the seniors there. So, seniors and veterans can go free to the state fair, but the program is a separate thing that people had to register in advance and it absolutely sold out two months ago. So, pretty amazing. Um, tomorrow also we have an on-the-road, Novi Library on-the-road trip to, um, to the Michigan Central Station. Gail was able to get a tour in, so it filled up like in a week. It was all filled up.
Two days?
Yeah, oh, really, two days. Yeah, it filled up.
You're gonna love it.
I mean, they're, it's gonna be great. So, they're gonna have lunch at Andiamo's. And, um, anyway, it's gonna be a fun trip.
A little bit different. Above 55, right? Age? Age?
Over 55?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, no, it's actually for anybody.
Actually, it's 21, we usually do 21 and older.
Yeah.
But it, yeah.
Anybody can go.
I mean, it, it tends to attract, but anyone 21 or older, because of the restaurants and potentially for alcohol, we do 21 and older.
So, there's, there's another one coming up that's not full yet and that's on the road to Saginaw. And, uh, I'm really excited about this one in particular because they're gonna be going to a mansion as well, I mean, a castle. And also be having, um, the, um, a tea ceremony, the official tea ceremony. And so there's a number of other things and they're gonna have soul food at the Baldwin's Barbecue. So, it's gonna be a great trip and there still are some seats available for that one. Be a longer day, but it's September 27th. Historical program too is coming up on, um, September 26th, Guardians of Michigan. And we'll be at the library with that program. And it's really, we've had this speaker before and he's really, he's amazing. And he's gonna talk about the, um, all the Great Lakes State Photography, Jeff Morrison, and, um, the wealth of architecture and the sculptures, architectural sculpture to be found in Michigan. And we've, people really love his program. So, I think that's, um, that's about it. And I think, uh, it's been a busy month. And gonna be a busier month.
Mm-hmm, yes. We're keeping off the busiest, yeah. Aside from summer reading, we, with school being back, it is, it becomes one of the busiest times.
And the other trustees? Okay. Moving on, the Treasurer's Report.
Okay. Uh, as mentioned, um, next month is when we anticipate having the finalized budget from last year. If you all look at, um, 21, you might have seen a, a bit of a surprise that we haven't seen, um, in a number of years. Uh, and that is on the 271 account right now, uh, from our current numbers from the city. We are, um, estimated that we're going to have a surplus um, of about $90,000. Keep in mind, this is, um, this is as we've been mentioning all along. This is doing two things. One is the, um, one is the added revenue that we gained that was unexpected. Um, and that's basically due to the current inflationary situation where Treasury bills and bonds are, are doing a little bit better than they have in the past. Um, and also the fact that we lost, for a good portion of the year, we were down in employees and we were down in some of our higher-end employees. Um, if we give up either that surplus in revenue or we give up the, uh, or we have our full employment, that surplus goes, goes, it goes away. So, it's kind of a, it, it's, it's nice to have, it's better than a, it's better than having a deficit. But, um, there's still, there's still some issues out there, especially with the unknown of how long, um, we're going to be in this inflationary situation. So, that's, that's really only the thing. Again, if you have any, any questions or comments on any items, like I said, next, next, uh, me, meeting, we anticipate having all the final numbers from the city.
Actually, just to clarify, I prob, it'll probably be October. Because the audit, the audit happens in September. I usually, because we're at the end of the month, yeah, it's usually October. But I do have, um, Dana queuing up for the annual report and, and working on that now so that we can quickly turn it around and get it to you so that we can make presentations in November, December for city council. Yes.
Any questions for our Treasurer? Thank you, Brian. In that case, we get to listen to our Director for the Director's Report.
Hello. So, on page 28, I'd like to recognize our September anniversaries first. Uh, Mary Robinson, who is our digital services librarian, has been with us 19 years. Uh, she's in the Information Services Department. Uh, Dominic Dute is 13 years. He's with our IT department. His position is supervisor and as you know, he maintains the iCube. Um, Jill Wasson is five years. She's a supervisor from our Support Services Department. Gabrielle Stangis, three years, but then Gabrielle just told us she's finished her library degree and she's going to be moving on to be a librarian. So, we will be saying goodbye to her. Um, Bindia Surianyan is two years and she is our bookkeeper in my administration office. Um, Emma DeSenso is a librarian, um, does a lot of outreach in the community. And she is celebrating one year. Kristen Sullivan in September will celebrate one year. She is our HR specialist. As you know, she's done a remarkable job this year. You saw the HR manual come through, so that was a big project. Um, and then Lily Kosaka is one year. She is a shelver from our Support Services Department. So, I wish them all a happy anniversary as we come into September. Uh, moving on to page 29, I did provide you some photos of the renovation. Would love for you to stop by and get a chance to see what's going on and just a few things that need to be shored up as well. Um, as we move along, um, I wasn't able to capture the photo that went with this newspaper article, but this was from, uh, the Novi Note, talking about the students that work in the Library Cafe. Um, it's a wonderful program and, and we work with our school district in order to provide that and hoping that we will have students again this year. I know that they're, um, the, um, particular program is, had some changes, not, but we should be hearing from them soon in order to, to set that up. As you move on to page 31, I wanted to give you the full agenda and all the information that took place at our Professional Development Day. We had a great day, uh, just getting feedback now back from the staff about it and then starting to plan for next year. So, we'll get new committee members and new, um, staff involved in helping to determine what we will plan for that following year. But it was a great day, a lot of, as you can see from the topics and things that we, we had, um, presented. I also included for you, because I thought this was really good information, Stephen Bowers from the Library Network, who is our director at the Consortium. He was our keynote that started the morning. And so he brought a slide presentation. This is not the full presentation, but the ones that were specific to Novi and some of our details. We are one of the highest circling libraries in the consortium, which is amazing. Um, and so he was there to, to toot our horn and to, you know, tell the staff how great they are and how much he appreciates, um, working with Novi. And, um, so it's pretty exciting to see what's going on. On page 33, just at the top, the TLN Consortium themselves, they are going to start a tagging project. You know, we've been tagging for years because we have the automated machine and they're now going to get everything catalogued and, or tagged, including other libraries, to make delivery, um, much more efficient. And that's gonna be helpful to us as well as we, when we bring in materials that don't have a tag. There's different processes that have to go on, um, and, and, um, swiping of a barcode, but it's a little different. Now our machine will be able to read things easier and it should cut down on some time. So, we're excited about that. Um, and then moving forward, I put in our, we have a back-to-school raffle coming. Still doing the art exhibit, traveling in Novi, um, for a little bit longer. Uh, there was an update on page 41 to the Song Fest, as President Stirling mentioned. We added an Elvis and Friends event. Um, page 42, Authors Live is back at Fox Run. Wonderful presentation. If you are looking to join us for $20, you can have lunch and hear this author. She is a Holocaust survivor. So, we're very excited about having her present. Um, usually I do a couple, two to three authors when I do this Authors Live, but this presentation, she has about an hour, spends a lot of time sharing information and Q and A. So, it's just one author, um, this time. And then moving on, we've launched our Community Read. 14 years in the making with our Community Read and this is a shared, um, opportunity with local libraries, um, right around our area, Northville, Wixom, Commerce, Wald Lake, uh, Salem, South Lion, Lion Township. I think I've covered everybody and us, uh, and Wixom, I apologize, and Wixom. So, there's seven libraries that come together, we choose a title. We promote it by having multiple copies and the copies are available downstairs on the first floor. Um, we want you to read it and then you get a chance to meet the author and hear about why, uh, she wrote the book, what inspired her. Um, and then, um, we're also, a, a nice added bonus this time is she'll actually do a small presentation at the high school for some high school students in the morning, um, leading up to the evening presentation that will be at the library on the 19th of November. So, a lot of great things that are coming this fall, um, for you to all enjoy. And then we have our, um, reports from different department heads. I added a new department head into the reports this time. Uh, Dana Van Oost is going to be, um, presenting Marketing Information and Communications and she is now in the report. We have a lot of great things that are happening, including some rebranding. Um, and you'll see that in her, in her report on page 58 and 59. Um, and then we have some information from our Historical Commission and Friends. Uh, they will be here next, uh, in September to give you their annual report for the year. Um, but it has been a great year. We're now closed out, um, and just waiting on those final, um, financials to be settled up. Any questions, if I can address any?
Thank you. Um, actually, it's, it's kind of related, but outside of the report.
Sure.
Um, I know we've been promoting Human Library.
Yes.
And I was wondering if there was an update on, um, or we could get an update maybe next month on how many books have applied.
Okay.
And, um, so this is, I don't know if the trustees all know about this yet. Um, but Julie and her staff, her passionate staff have engaged in about a year to, maybe longer, to be able to put this program for our community together. And just from watching the engagement on social media, I feel like it's one of our most engaged posts. So, if people don't know about the Human Library, this was, um, a concept that was created, I forgot, was it Denmark?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Copenhagen, yes.
Yeah, Copenhagen. And so several years ago, um, I had also brought it up that, hey Julie, have you heard about this? But we were completely understaffed. Like this was not gonna be on our radar, um, for quite a while because it's, it's a big undertaking. But the whole purpose behind it is for people in the community to check out a book, which is another person, and to carry on a conversation and get to know them. And it's, it's a way to build bridges, it's a way to enhance and build community because, um, that's really what it's all about. You may not agree with certain things, but then when you actually meet the human behind it, maybe that might change your mind or open your mind a little bit more. So, it has a lot to do with exposure and creating those relationships. And I'm just really excited about this program. I'm really proud of the staff because they really, just to let everybody know, they've worked so hard on, it's a lot of work to put this together.
And if I can put a plug out, a plug out to Emma DeSenso, who is our, our outreach librarian. Um, when she came on board last September, I sat down with her and asked if she'd be interested in, in being involved in this. And, and she was, she was very excited. I knew at that time we still had staff, you know, some staff issues and, and now with Hillary even gone, I had said to her, you know, I, I understand if this doesn't take off right away just because we're trying to, you know, get ourselves back, back to full staff. But she has been very, um, committed to this particular project. It's coming out of our DEI, um, you know. But it is a way to learn about others and how others believe in things or values or mission for themselves. Um, maybe a trauma that they experienced in their life. Maybe they have a disability. Um, maybe, uh, they, you know, were raised in a home that is now different from how they feel and, and how they're, um, raising their own children, but yet it was a culture that they were once part of. Um, this really does, if, if you get a chance, you can go to Human Library and the website to see how this, and there's been many Michigan libraries already that have, um, have hosted this. But it's just an opportunity to connect with others and learn from others and open your eyes and ears to something new. And that's what we want to do. We want to just provide that particular opportunity. Um, but I will, I'd be happy to get, um, a, a little bit of an update from Emma and see how we're doing with planning it. It is going to be on Saturday, November 9th, um, in the building. Um, and, and she's working on those particular logistics now. So, I thank her for, um, you know, just coming in and jumping into something really big and, and really taking it and, and running. So, yeah.
And I have another thank you. So, my son, um, signed, like renewed or re-signed up for library card because it's been a little bit. And our, um, my Libby app, um, because I'm very app-driven, go figure. And I was able to put my library card and with the help of the staff, because I actually was stumped on how to put another card on the app. With the help of Dana, but then also staff at our front desk, they gave the, they were so amazing and they gave me information so I could do it.
Wonderful.
So, now I have, just for residents to know, you can program your library card in the app, but multiple cards in the household.
Yes.
So, it's really, really nice, especially for your kids. So, I just wanted to thank the staff.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that they know that, yes.
Speaking of apps, it reminds me, um, can, can we access the library through our driver's license as in addition to our library card?
You cannot.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just the library card that serves as the identification.
Some libraries have that cross-referenced somehow?
We, we are requiring the library card.
Okay.
Um, we'll give a one-time pass to someone who doesn't have it and we'll do a one-time lookup. But we really have, over the years, asked and required a library card for them to have. And with the way technology is now, you can put it in your phone, you can add it to the app. So, you don't have to have like the physical card. And we know that everyone is carrying a phone. So, that is, we take driver's license information because we need it in the record, but we don't use the driver's license as a way to check out materials. We are looking for the library card to be presented.
Okay. And maybe I meant to ask a slightly different question in the sense that we require a library card, but is there a way to tell from the driver's license that the person has a library card?
Um, y- yes. I mean, we can, we can look up the driver's license if it's presented to us to see if they have a card.
Okay.
Yes, because we would be using, you know, their information, their address and everything.
But then they would still need the card.
They, yeah, we don't, we don't want people to use their driver's license. We want them to use their library card. Yes. Yep. Great question. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I think we're at the end of the Director's Report unless any other trustee had questions or comments. Um, that brings us to the next public comment section. Um, I do not see anybody in the audience, so I am going to skip over my little speech about public comment. Moving into committee reports, um, I'm gonna ask anybody, um, chair or member of any committee if they want to say anything about their committee. if they want to say anything about their committee that doesn't involve an item action. But we don't have any item actions now, so that doesn't have to be in the other place. But if there's anybody that wants to speak as to activities at the committee level. Don't all speak at once.
It was a quiet month. We didn't actually meet. It was a quiet month. I needed time to regroup, I hope you know. It was, we were done with the fiscal year and I had to take a breath.
I see nobody rushing to speak about committees. We have no matters for library action tonight. The communications, we've talked a little bit about already. We don't have a closed session tonight, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay. Do a hand? All, no discussion, all in favor of adjournment?
Yes.
We are adjourned.